Would like to call to order the Select Board meeting from...
Um, they need to angle the...
Oh, hello?
There you are.
Okay, hi there, Peter.
It's a copy ahead.
We're out in the bullpen there, weren't we? Okay. Good beginning. Should we start again? I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting of August 8th, 2022. And we are going to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guys have it. We will adjourn to the executive session, be back here hopefully at 6:30.
Proud of your time.
To call the meeting, the select board meeting of August 8th, 2022, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Aye, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, recognizing our veterans, both past and present, and of course, our health workers. Thank you. First, I want to just acknowledge that Mr. Gracie is not here tonight. He had every intention to come. Unfortunately, his wife Yvette is having some health issues, and we wish her the absolute best in recovery, and we miss you, Frank. We'll see you back here as soon as possible. Thank you. We've signed the warrant already, and we have an appointment, a hearing for Eversource. Please step forward, introduce yourself. This is a public hearing?
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Elder, representing Eversource. Thank you for having me this evening. Eversource is proposing to install one new joint-owned pole labeled 153 over 69 and 1/2. This pole will be owned by both Verizon and Eversource. Eversource will be doing the installation. If a police detail is necessary for the work being done in the area, one will be requested. It is also going in between two existing poles. The work is being done to replace and relocate some of the regulators on the poles.
It's an impressive presentation. Okay. Any questions first from the board?
And I apologize, Sun Farn's Corner Road.
We're going to open the public hearing first. It's a public hearing. The board, the hearing is now open. Any questions or comments from the board first? Okay, here. Okay, hearing none. Any questions or comments from the crowd? Both in favor or against? None. Seeing none, okay. Continue. What's that? Close the hearing. Done. Thank you, Stanley. Okay, the hearing is now closed.
Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second? Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You're unanimous. Thank you. You're all set.
Thanks very much.
Before Ms. Elder goes, just one, once in a while, the board would get an update on double poles in town.
Okay.
Can you contact whoever in the massive conglomeration at Eversource and see if we can get an updated report?
Okay.
As to the double poles in town, and if there's any that need to be corrected immediately? Because there are some that are just kind of like, the pole is snapped, and the second pole is like way up in the air.
Okay.
It looks like the letter P as you're driving by, so.
Sending out signals?
Yeah, yeah, if we can get an update on that.
And who should I get in contact with?
Mr. McGinnis from our board. That way we can have.
I'm sorry?
Just the town administrator office.
Okay, you got it.
Great, thank you.
I will take care of that and have that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too, now.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have interim director of budget and finance appointment, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, as we all learned, Mr. Barnes has been selected to be the town administrator of the town of Rainham, so we congratulate him once again. As he prepares for his departure, a big part of what the finance director slash treasurer does in town is the representative for the town with our financial institutions, and also as a treasurer certified with the state. We need to maintain that in the interim while we are searching for a replacement for Mr. Barnes. So I submitted a memorandum to the select board in the packet requesting that Gary Carrero, our current town collector, be appointed the interim finance director treasurer while we perform the search. Gary's been with the town for, I think, two years now? Four years? Oh, look at that, time flies. Gary's been involved as part of our budget team for the past year and a half, internal team preparing both the operational and capital budgets and a lot of our financial analysis. He's a certified treasurer. He does an excellent job. He's well-regarded by the staff and myself and our team. He's communicative and collaborative, so I think he would be an excellent fit in the interim to help fill that role.
Okay. Questions, comments? This is a state requirement. We have this position.
Correct. So the banks require us to have someone authorized by the board, as well as the state.
Make a motion that the board appoint Gary Carrero as the interim director of budget and finance.
I'll second that. I just want to ask one question. So Gary, if you don't mind, so you're going to have, you're going to have two crowns now. You got enough time to do it all?
Actually, three. So, yeah, I mean, in a lot of communities, if you've seen their structure, some of them have gone to a, I know, that's probably another conversation for another day, both the combined treasurer, collector, and some even have a go to finance, also the finance director position. So what I envision to do is to look at, you know, we, Greg has been here for quite some time, and a new position, a new person coming in, a new set of eyes, looking at process and procedure in both offices, and maybe being able to streamline some of the processes that we currently do to save time and efficiency in a lot of these, in both offices, if you will. But I, I'm pretty good with time management, so I feel very confident that I'd be able to do both.
I'm sure you are, too. I just wanted to ask.
Yes.
I'm sure people at home wanted to, wanted to hear that.
Definitely, yes.
And reassure everyone, you're the gentleman for the job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Comments? Anybody else? We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? You're in, Gary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can we have a few minutes here and ask Mr. Barnes to come to the microphone?
For sure thing. I'll see your way ahead. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barnes, on behalf of myself, I want to congratulate you on your upward mobility as being appointed the town administrator of the town of Rainham. I do want to say this. Your tenure here at Dartmouth has been less than nothing but stellar. I don't, I think it will be difficult to find somebody who has the ability to do the work that you have done over the number of years. Your position, such as yourself, in your, that position, you make many friends, but you make an equal amount of non-friends. Because sometimes you have to use the bad word, no. And, but, I can honestly say that your work here has been exemplary. It's been well-received, and I just want to congratulate you and thank you for the work that you've done in the town, and only wish you the best.
Thank you.
Going forward.
I just, a couple of things I already told you off the air, but, so I've, my 15 years with the town, you've always been at that position. And we've, we've had some interesting conversations over the years, and you've always, your door has always been open to me. And I really enjoyed, enjoyed your comments and why you want to do things you didn't say. I did it. You always had a reason for why you made, made a decision that you did. And it was interesting to me and encouraging that I could go to you at any time and get legitimate answers and something to back it up. And I thank you for it. And I wish you a wonderful, wonderful time in your new position, and I'm sure you'll do a great job.
I go back to the screening committee when we hired Mr. Barnes, so that was a long time back, and the, Greg was always the guy that came in a room and looked like, when he brought his box of information, and you figure the guy's never going to give you an answer, but son of a gun, he had the answers all the time. And I spent a lot of years with him on finance committee, and then here in the select board as well. And I've worked many years in the town of Rainham and that area. I know it well, and it'll be a challenge for you, but I think you're up to it. You'll do great. Because you have a boatload of information, you're willing to learn, and now you're going to see what it's like to be number one man in charge, so. I too wish you the very best, and you'll be around a little longer anyway, but I think it's appropriate. We made some comments tonight, too, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Greg. Great job.
I guess I'll echo those sentiments, although I'm newest on this committee. I have, we have dealt, worked with each other on numerous occasions before, and you have very big shoes to fill, so good luck, and good luck with your new endeavor. Very exciting.
Well, thank you all. I leave with bittersweet feelings. I'm excited about my new opportunity, but there's a lot of people I will miss from here, and I've had the privilege of working with most of you throughout my 12-plus years. Sean's actually been on the board that whole time. He's, I guess, the only one remaining. And others have, I've seen you go from FinCom planning board to, to select board and from school administration over here, so. So again, I appreciate your sentiments, and I have a lot of good, good thoughts about many of our interactions over the years.
Thanks for making me feel old, Greg.
Not me.
You're older than me anyway, so it doesn't make a difference. That I can always say.
Thank you.
He is 152.
Next on the, next on the list is the director of budget and finance screening committee, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, I just wanted to update the board on the process for hiring the new director of budget and finance. The town charter has a screening committee. Per the town charter, the screening committee needs to be an appointed member of, a five-member board. She'll be appointed by one member of the finance committee, the personnel board, which is the select board, board of assessors, a town meeting member who is appointed by the moderator and the personnel administrator. So I will work with the finance committee and the board of assessors to have them appoint a member to be on the search committee. And I've spoken with the moderator and asked her to start to think about who she would like to appoint. So you don't need to do anything tonight, but I just wanted to update you on the process in the search committee.
On a heavyweight's.
And you will be the select board's member, basically, representing us.
If the board appoints me to be the personal.
We should do that now, right?
I don't think I want to do that.
We don't have to do that now?
You don't have to. We don't have to. We'll put the committee together, probably the next meeting, I would say, appoint. We, we've advertised the position, so, but that was just last week, so we haven't. Takes some time to get some applicants in.
It's quite a job description for that. No wonder they have such a heavyweight committee to pick him out. Okay. Next, is the town clerk here?
No.
It's here.
She was supposed to be here. I'm not sure, but the board needs to vote to sign the election warrant. It is in the packet.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Do we need to make any public announcements at all?
No, she posts this, so it's for the board to review and.
Basically, it's for the precinct's locations.
Identifying for the primary.
And who the candidates are.
Yes, the precinct locations, the candidates, the dates, and the times.
And police details at every location.
For the primary.
For the primary.
September 6th.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay. We had a vote or not? We did anyway. Okay.
Yes, you do need to vote.
We did need to. Okay, great. Okay. Balling locations. Okay. ARPA, American Rescue.
Yes, so the previous few meetings, we've been before the board to discuss ARPA funding. I've included, you've seen the presentation a few times. At the previous meeting, the board voted to fund three items. The purchase of the property on Russell's Mills Road, the town website, and the school HVAC request. At that meeting, you had also asked if the representatives from the Board of Public Works and the representatives supporting the projects related to pickleball and recreation come forward to just answer any questions, if the board had the questions, or to talk about the projects and their importance. And also a member from the capital planning committee to be here. As we had mentioned, the capital planning committee has reviewed the projects as well and recommended them as part of the overall capital plan in the previous budget.
I would just like to add that, hearing from either other towns and cities and even the projects, that this is a massive national program where we have, every town and every city is putting together all these kind of programs, whether it be for consultants, for engineers, for planners, and getting the money together and get shovel ready in the ground, because there's going to be a free-for-all, looking for the money and the people to do all this. And I think it's really important that we try to stay ahead of it and make sure that we are setting our priorities, getting it done. And that's why we tried to call for this tonight, to keep this thing rolling and to keep it in front of us, because for too long, we don't want to get behind the eight ball and find out that we're just not able to compete. So we want to begin with DPW, or?
Yes, so the items for Public Works was the emergency generators at multiple locations for $225,000. The biofilters and variable frequency drives for $75,000, the rebuilt filter presses for $500,000, switchgear maintenance for $27,500, the soar department operational study, $30,000, the infill, inflow and infiltration remediation for $25,000, and the SCADA improvements and controls upgrade for $165,000. And Mr. Barber is here, Mr. Almy from the board, and Mr. Sullivan from the water department, if there's any questions from the board on those.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did I make a motion the last meeting to vote, to do the DPWs?
You did.
And what happened to it?
We did not. We only voted on three, three projects.
I thought I made a motion to.
I thought he did.
No, we voted on, we voted on the three issues that Mr. McGinnis mentioned. That's why we're here.
First of all, I mean, the DPW stuff is, I mean, it's a no-brainer. I mean, it's just years of, you know, I guess, not doing the work or holding off and just maintaining it, that, you know, we need to bring the equipment at least into the 20th century.
Mr. Barber, question? Is it safe to say that most of these projects are projects that all obviously need to be done, but because these funds now are available, that now, that's how we're going to be able to get it done?
Absolutely, yes. Some of the, some of the units are, are old and disrepair. The generators are to replace existing kicker motors that are mechanically connected to the pumps in the pump stations and the sewer pump stations. So if the electricity goes out, that kicker motor will turn on one pump. If that pump fails, the backup pump won't, won't go on. With a generator, it, it'll be connected to the power, so with the electricity, both pumps can, can run.
Yeah, it won't hit the fan.
So these are projects, in terms of the timetable and getting the proper, getting everything in order to be ready for this, ready for the funds, how do you feel about that?
I feel pretty good. I don't know currently what the lead times are on the generators, but they, you know, they, they have been quoted, and that's why we got this number, so.
So is that steadfast now? There'll be no additional cost to these, these particular motors? There's no cost increase?
Well, that, yeah, so this was, these. Well, that, yeah, so this was, these are, you know, prior to the budget, just prior to the budget, so if any increases have happened since then.
So that could happen.
Yeah, in this day.
Yeah, well, I understand, that's why I'm mentioning it, and I know specifically this type of machinery.
Yeah.
So we could incur a little more money in this.
We could.
Most likely not could, but most likely will.
So if we, if we approve this tonight, that'll allow you to get, to continue the process and get it done?
Absolutely, yes.
Questions?
I think one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting was looking at the five-year capital improvement plans for each of the departments that had submitted them, to look at what we could, what we could do with the ARPA funding to move any of those along, because in our document, we do have, that we have in front of us tonight, we have the information for possible projects, which we will not have the funding for, but that are, you know, coming up. So we have capital projects, cost overages for 1.5 million, a high school roof for 4.45, water sewer infrastructure for an additional 1.7 million, the housing authority for $900,000, and a DRPT playground replacement for $998,000, the recreation center, the bridge, the Dias Landing Small Boat Marina, Bliscan, a Lake Nokachoke, Tucker Road intersection, and Dartmouth Schools. I mean, we have a lot of other things going on, and I think we just wanted to look at the capital improvement five-year list for all the departments, to see if there was anything we could move through this funding, which would then open up other funding sources when it comes time to address these other things that are on the horizon.
Exactly with the purpose of this, yeah?
We can, we can share the, the five-year capital plan, that's part of the town meeting warrant packet generally, and the capital planning committee goes through those with the departments, and that's how we come up with the items that we've chosen to try to fund through the ARPA funding for FY '23 and '24, but also keeping in mind that there's some future expenditures, expenditures, and some of them, we just don't have a dollar amount on, that's why you kind of see those, like Tucker Road, like Nokachoke. But we can certainly share that five-year report again.
So I know I've seen what we put forth, but not necessarily for every department, the other things, the wish lists.
I mean, can we, I mean, I want to get the DPW going, because I know those emergency generators is very important, but also those belt filter presses are just, it's tantamount to this gets done, but also part of the thing with the DPW is the operational study. You know, this is a good time to get that done. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the seven items listed for the DPW, the emergency generators, the purchase, the three biofilters and blowers, the rebuild, the filter presses, the switchgear maintenance, the sewer department operational funding, the INI remediation, and the SCADA improvements and control upgrades.
I would second that.
What does that total, about a million?
I had it down as a $1,047,500.
There you go. I say it's listed in the, as listed in the presentation, to make it easier.
I, I think that these are critical. Made it pretty clear that this is stuff that now has to be done, but we've got to get them ordered and get this stuff.
Yeah. We could hold the price down once we get it ordered, too.
Yeah, yeah. We want to vote on the, we got a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comment or question on these? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous. That portion of it is done. A million 45,000?
Million zero four seven.
Forty-seven?
Yep, 500.
Thank you. Do we want to take a look at these, the next page, the next series of, okay. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items on the next list of 2023 proposed HVAC upgrade project for multiple schools.
That was funded the last time. Three of them have been funded, the first one and the last two.
Thank you.
So it's just the.
High school tennis court. High school tennis court at 100,000, the DRP tennis, basketball, pickleball court renovation at 460,000, the recreation center design and engineering, 1,192,000. The purchased property's been done.
It was already done.
Town website upgrade's been done, and Russell Mills Road, Russell Mills Road Pickleball Court, 330,000. I personally like to hear from the parks department on those, those, anybody here want to speak, volunteer? Don't, don't charge out all at once, guys.
Come on down.
No, no, you can't leave, you've got to come over here.
Mr. Bar.
Tim Lancaster, Superintendent Parks and Rec.
Could you just kind of give us an up, a little update on all those projects?
Yeah, sure.
And how important they are?
Some of them are kids.
Yeah, there's only two.
No, no, the parks ones only, yeah. Thank you.
So the two items that were selected for potential ARPA funds were obviously to resurface the regional park facilities, tennis, basketball, and slash pickleball courts, and that's a big number, but that's a huge site, so I was telling CPC the other night when we were over there for the grant for the playground facility up there, that, to me, that's our newest park, but it's also the park that is actually furthest behind renovation, it's now over 20 years old, so while I was here when we actually did most of that construction, actually all of it, ironically, it's now actually at the point where we need to start renovating it again. We've done a tremendous amount of work at a Ponte Gansett and Jones, Russell Mills Landing, and we've done tremendous improvements to buildings and fences and facilities and courts everywhere, playgrounds. We really haven't touched the north end of town, because again, I was, we were working on what were the old facilities, and we're getting to the point now where those facilities are where they need to be, and we've kind of ignored the regional park, which obviously, like I just mentioned, is older than I think it is. So the court up there is suffering, I've heard from many folks, some of folks on finance committee, some on the capital committee, others that are big into the new sport of pickleball, for sure, about the condition of the courts there, they'd obviously like it addressed. We've done what we can with trying to seal the cracks, but when you get to a point when a court is that old, it needs to be further addressed. So that's what that, that funding.
Can we mention exactly where that, that posse is?
The Dartmouth Regional Park and Trails on 04 of a road, yep. So, I mean, so that, this number here is to redo the fencing, the courts, the basketball hoops, everything from start to finish in that, that area, striping it back for both tennis, basketball, and pickleball.
How do you rate the usage presently, and what it would be if we do these repairs?
I don't rate the usage, I rate the safety of the court. So right now, it's a relatively unsafe condition because of the gaps, there's only so much we can do with the ceiling. Pickleball really can't use it due to the cracking from what, what they've kind of mentioned to me, so, you know, it's more of a safety issue than it is a usage issue, so. Once it's, once it's, once it's done, once it's, we eventually get to it, because this is just a capital item we have, once we get to that point and we resurface those courts, the pickleball group wants to use that as their main, one of their main bases, because they need four pickleball courts in one spot to be able to do their.
Fountains.
Yeah, have their league, their league in one spot, and we can't offer them that right now, you know, we've striped Russell Mills Landing as a court, we've striped the old Smithex School back basketball court as a court, which they use every single day, but it's only one court, and they can't, their league can't function in that fashion, so the regional park would give them four courts in one spot, which would allow them to, to do more of what they're looking to do in the town, so.
On the Russell Mills Road property, right now, it's, there's basketball.
Correct.
Right, and there will continue to be basketball.
Correct.
And pickleball.
So on the Russell Mills Road property, which is under, just under the selectmen's more facilities, however, Sean listed that, because that's not actually a park property, but it's a, it's a recreational property, so there will be, that will continue to be basketball, and it will continue to be used as pickleball as well, that was what I believe his plan was there, so.
But that'll be one court also?
No, they'll get more, he'll get, he'll be able to get three there.
Oh, they will?
Yeah.
Well, that's a deal.
So, so one thing to Mr. Tattelbaum's point about use, I think we're starting to see, particularly this summer, a lot of our recreation sites are getting a lot more use, whether it's Round Hill or Jones Park or the regional park, there's a lot of people out there looking to use these recreational facilities, so we're, we're hearing from that. So there's been a lot of requests, particularly, and in regard to pickleball, there's a big pickleball contention, I think we all know about that, but just use of the facilities, the current basketball court on Russell Mills Road is severely underutilized, it's just in not great shape, so we want to make something that people can take advantage of, because they are out there trying to use as, as much of the town's resources as we can offer, so this is just a good opportunity to fund some of these items to, to give the people what they're looking for.
I guess my question is, we're talking about $800,000 here, and I know it has, I know there's a need for it, it should be done, but is this going to get the kind of usage that $800,000 deserves, assuming they're both done and they're working as?
From the massive amount of people that have been crowding the park board meetings regarding pickleball, I would say you don't have to worry about that. The other thing you need to remember, too, is, especially with the regional facility, is that's all the entire north end of the town of Dartmouth has, so we don't offer that anywhere, and that's, you know, I had that same conversation with CPC regarding the playground, we have one from, in North of Allen Street, there is one, that's, that's the one. We have very limited recreational opportunities in North Dartmouth, and the need, as Mr. McGinnis was mentioning, it's kind of odd, because the need for recreational demand in this town has, I don't, I don't, can't really put a word on it, but it has changed so dramatically in probably 15 years. What the residents expect for service in outdoor recreation or recreation in general, it's night and day from when I first started working here 23 years ago. I mean, I mean, night, like, not even close, what the people demand, or what they're looking for from their town. It's not even close to what it was, I mean, before it was, you know, a seasonal operation, now it's, you couldn't even think of it being like that. I mean, these facilities are used year-round, as long as there's not snow on them, and quite frankly, the pickleball group will shovel the snow, because they did it during the big storm we had, they were out there the next day shoveling the court so they could use it that same day. So there's no such thing as seasonal recreation in this town anymore, it's year-round recreation, has been for some time, and I don't see that changing, because the demand is just off the charts. And that goes for everything, like you mentioned. I mean, beach ticket sales again are higher than last year, every year it's higher, everything is always more, nothing is ever going back the other way.
Well, recreation, you know, leads to a healthy community, so I think that's wonderful.
If someone were to say that we're spending $800,000 on like a handful of pickleball courts, that would be unfair. This is $800,000 for massive opportunity in both ends of town to give people variety of opportunities in all kinds of activities.
Right, because none of, none of those are single-use, those are all multi-use designations, so.
Okay.
Russell Mills actually is, is basketball, will be, the basketball court will be resurfaced as well as using some of those courts as pickleball.
Pickleball and new lights, fence, etc.
So it's not just, and the DRPT is tennis, basketball, pickleball court renovation, so there's a lot there.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lancaster, always has the answers?
Did you?
We have one more.
Another item.
Right. So the, yeah.
So, excuse me, before you say that.
Yes.
This is a great segue into, into usage of property. I know you mentioned that the pickleball players are shoveling off their, their courts, but this would add a whole different dimension to all of this. This would add the opportunity now to play at almost any time, seven days a week, no matter what the weather is.
That's correct, that's correct for any of those, those type of sports.
So you take all of that, what you have outside, and bring it inside?
That's correct, for the winter months, yeah, or for, you know, inclement weather, for sure. And, and we talk, you know, we've got the, the fathers of recreation, some of them over there, for sure, and there are many.
Grandfathers?
There are many mothers and fathers of recreation in this town, but there's two for sure, a couple over there, and, and we, those needs speak for themselves, I mean, we let the gentleman that did the study have at it, he contacted all these groups, he did his own thing, we didn't really feed him any other information other than contact numbers and names, because we knew, I mean, I knew just from trying to do scheduling for these guys in the wintertime that the need was there, so I knew there was no, I knew what the answer was going to be, that was an easy, that was the easy part. But there's a whole, we know that need exists, we know basketball and all, all these sports need some indoor space in the wintertime or even year-round, but, and I said it the last time I was here, and I'll say it again, our rec programs in this community, our rec programs, the town of Dartmouth run rec programs, need space, and I've, you've seen me move these things and juggle them around from one location to the other, we moved, we got rid of a Ponte Gansett because of the, the fact that there were too many people there that couldn't interact with our kids, and some things that happened there that we didn't like. So we moved them to one of the schools, and we moved them to the community, community park. The problem is, at the community park, we have very limited indoor access for an arraigns. Normally, it's just a little room in the library that doesn't really cut it, especially a library's not really a good place for a bunch 70, you know, 40 or 50 kids that I would usually have over there, so not, not exactly a good place in the library, but we have tried to make it work. The Quinn School, we moved the camp to the Quinn School, and like, right now, I have 75 kids at the Quinn School, and I've said it before, and this is no fault of any agency in the town, it's no fault of the school departments, but that's when the school department has to work, that's their time, and we are so severely impacted by them having to do what they have to do to get the schools ready. This year, I know, I've talked to Mr. McGinnis about it, I don't, it's, we just don't have a good, safe place, you know, we don't have full access to the school, because they're waxing the floors and they're, they're getting them ready for the opening, so we don't have access to that, we don't have access to an air-conditioned space anymore at the Quinn School. You know, they had a major issue here where they had to redo the service feeds to the school, and they had to replace the transformer, it looked like, I, we, someone joked, we probably should have done toucher truck that day, because we had more trucks going through where the kids were than the kids. I mean, I had probably, I've never seen so many ever-source trucks, we had Frank-up trucks, clean harbor trucks, we had backhoes, we had trails, we had everything, and we, we were able to juggle around that. On top of that, you know, now, like, they're painting the bathrooms, so our access to bathrooms is limited. There's just a lot of things that, that happen that we try to work around, and it's very difficult when someone does their maintenance on exactly the opposite schedules, you know, so they need to do that, and that's no fault of them, they got to do it, but at the same time, our kids have to be safe, and the world isn't a safe place anymore, I know that's not a shocker to anyone here, so, you know, that's a whole other element of a building that we need, that we can utilize for things like this, and that's just, that's just one example, it's a big example, it's a very serious example, but it's just one thing, on top of the basketball and the soccer and cheer and everything else, you know, that could take place in that facility.
Well, I, the, I was so impressed with the, the meeting, the way it went with all the seniors that were here, and how much they, they loved their own building, but also said that, give the kids a break and give them a place they should have, and that was really, and I think that, that was the jump-off. The problem is that I think it was staggering to see what that building's going to cost, and I know that there's a process here, that we have to say yes to one thing and then move on after that, but I, I for one, this one is a lot different than all the other buildings we've done, because it's, it's, it's so much more expensive than we anticipated, and it's not very fancy either. It's basically three gyms with a couple of rooms and a track going around, oh, and a lobby, and it, we need three gyms, but that, it's, who knows if 14 million will even hold at this point in time either, could be a perfect place, so I, I'm troubled by that process, because I would love to have that building, I know how important it is, but I know we, we haven't talked about financing, and the, and I know it's not part of the sequence of how you do this, but to me, I think we need to, should have a little bit of discussion about that, because we're going to, we potentially are going to release a million dollars here for the study, and we have not really tossed around the idea, where's this money going to come from, or how are we going to get it and finance it?
The numbers are not going to change, they're going to get higher.
Yeah.
No matter what.
Yeah.
So it's imperative on our part to get it moving sooner rather than later. At some point, if we wait too long, it'll be, we will not be able to afford to do it at all. So my, my opinion is that we move that, that forward and, and see what it looks like.
Well, the tenants of ARPA funding, two of them are that it's equity focused and community empowering, and I think what we're hearing from Mr. Lancaster is this is equity community empowering. And I think what we're hearing from Mr. Lancaster is this is equity-focused.
Exactly.
And the community, our Dartmouth community wants more, better, year-round recreational sites. Right now, we don't even have one.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, to Ms. Brooks' point, you know, this is an opportunity with the ARPA funding to look at providing a better benefit to the community. I know the design and engineering funds are significant, but, you know, we ordinarily would not have access to this funding, so it's a good opportunity. And I know when you look at the actual cost of the facility, it's significant. It will not get less over time. But also, when, when you look at it from the town standpoint, there's an enormous need for this. There's multiple ways to fund it. ARPA funding needs to be expended by FY24 committed. I, I think, you know, if we've seen this, just the way the market is in getting projects done, it's very difficult. There's only so many contractors out there. So, I think there'll be an opportunity, we're estimating that there's going to be an opportunity for more ARPA funding in the near future for projects as they get closer to FY24. There's also a number of private businesses that would probably be interested in donating toward a cause like this. And it gets framed around a recreation center quite a bit because there's a huge need for that. But there's also a need for an emergency shelter in town, a meeting place in town, whether it's for just voting or for having larger meetings. There's not a large meeting space in town for the, for the residents. So, it's, it's, it would serve many purposes, a huge need in the community. I think people just think it's basketball courts, but it's a lot more than that. It's, it's a central location in town for people to meet for a variety of reasons. So, when people look at that, they have to think about the big picture and what it can really be for the community and the benefit it can provide the community. So, it's an opportunity to have access to some funding for the design that the town wouldn't have had previously. And also, if the design gets completed, the town can look at the number and decide to move forward or to wait, but the design is done. So, it's, it just seems like a nice opportunity to use this funding for something that could support the whole community.
I mean, at this price point, let's face it, there's, there's a possibility a portion of this building could be part of a dead exclusion.
Mm-hmm.
And I think there's...
Anyway, sorry, go ahead.
I think there's unbelievable support for the project, but you know, then you move to the fact that a good portion could be dead exclusion, but you know, that's the way it goes. And I think that, that's why, I, I think that's why we need to have this discussion right now, because I think it's certainly possible.
Well, the only way to know what those costs will be, will be to move forward at this point.
Right.
Tim?
No, I was going to just say the same thing. Now's the time. The longer we wait, the more it's going to cost.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Lancaster?
No, I don't.
I think Mr. Viera was outstanding tonight. Thank you.
He won't, he will not shy away from the microphone.
Mr. Viera.
Mr. Viera, you're on, you're on the clock.
First chairman of the park board, also your EMA director, and just chewed off of something that Sean said. In our post-COVID world, the facilities that we used before essentially are obsolete. The way the state, and it hasn't, hasn't changed yet. They're still under COVID protocols in the Commonwealth, and I don't know if that's going to change. I heard December 22nd of this year, the public health may change the, the protocols, but who knows? There may be some other pandemic or something else that changes in the meantime. But the way we used to do business, we just can't do that anymore. Utilizing schools, as we all know, with what happened in Texas and some other places throughout the country, it's not a safe facility to put people in the school that aren't vetted. We know that. The Conson agent, where essentially our primary area is, space-wise, it's not conducive to that anymore. There was some discussion with the elder group, probably about three months ago, and this question did come up. We were working, trying to work collaboratively with New Bedford to try to set something up at the Keith Middle School along with the Red Cross to try to have a regional shelter for those times that we actually use it. We're fortunate in Dartmouth that most of our people have people. You know, if something comes up, they can go somewhere. And neighbors are extremely like cooperative, and everybody takes care of one another, which we're fortunate. Other communities aren't such. But the project that we're talking about, the rec center or community center, whatever you want to call it, again, this, that would probably alleviate a lot of problems. We could put people in there. They could, they could socially distance from one another, town meetings, other things, other meetings in, in general. Instead of having our senior citizens walk the North Dartmouth Mall, which I'm not happy with, I'm not really a fan of that, they can go to one place and actually be there with staff to monitor them. My children, who, again, Tim talked about some safety issues. We've had some bizarre incidents recently from our Round Hill Beach, which, to our rec center, you know, our, our recreation program, where we've had some parents who are living in split families, who sometimes don't see eye-to-eye. And it puts, it puts our directors, and they're young adults, in a very precarious position. Fortunately, Tim's been around. Sometimes, some of my people will show up there to take care of business when need be. But again, I think it's important to have all of those things. And what Sean had said, and what, I understand the funding thing, but we find the money to do all these other things, other projects. I remember when nobody wanted to build a new high school, we built a new high school. I remember the library. It was creative financing, I like to say, for that one there. We built that. We've built some other facilities, and I think this one here, if you talk to anyone that's been here for a while, we've been fighting this and trying to get this facility, I want to go 40 years. And I think that's reasonable to get that. And I think it's important for all of us to have that. And I think, again, town meeting, who wants town meeting in the school? Who's going to stand there and say, we should have town meetings in the school, or we should have some of these larger meetings? We don't, who know who these people are? Are we vetting the people properly? We know who, we know, we think we know who our town meetings are, members are. I'm going to tell you, maybe we don't know who they are. Okay? And we're putting them in positions and putting them in places where they shouldn't be.
And it also poses a parking issue on those days as well.
Correct.
And you make, you make an excellent point coming up here as the, you know, head of emergency management. The ARPA funding is here because we had a pandemic, unprecedented. And so, unprecedented, the things that you learned during that, I, I think about the community center, that would be a no-brainer as to where we would set up if we needed to, another, you know, inoculation center.
I mean, using it at the high school, thank God that we had, and I'm, I'm going to throw some bones to Greg right here because he kept us honest the whole time. We were putting in things here and there, and when you say no, the man said no to me more times than I care to think about. But him and Donna, with Chris, great team, did good things. And I think that, I look at the, we had to set the center up, so we had people down there setting the center up at the high school. And then, on Sunday afternoon at 5:00 after we, we put 1,000 people through there, we got to break it down because there's a softball, volleyball game in there on Monday night. So, we're taking all the stuff, putting it away.
Bring it back out the next weekend.
So, something like this, this community center, we could set something up, have a plan in place, and really go forward. So, that's just my two cents. It's, it's a passion of mine. I think with the facility, where it would be located, we're buying that property. I think that that area is going to be phenomenal as far as youth sports, the ability to have them there all together. You know, hopefully, God willing, if something happens when they knock the old police department down, I'd like to see a playground there to have mom and dad can draw, play with the three and four-year-old while, while the sister's playing girls lacrosse, and the boys are inside playing basketball, and the parents can see everybody by being in one park. I think that would be ultimate for us. So...
Thank you.
I'm going to second that. Girl sports.
I'd just like to make one, you can make one comment. So, we found a way to get the Dartmouth Police Department a building finally. First time ever, we found a way to do it. We built it.
Million dollars, under budget.
Under budget.
On time.
On time. Dave and I, and you, and many other people. However, however, quite few more, I can't mention. But now's the time to find a way to build a rec center, period.
I, I think, I think generally across the board, I mean, even people who, who have a tendency of disagreeing and not seeing eye-to-eye on a lot of, a lot of things, I think are all on the same page of this. It's, it's for the kids. It's for our future. It's a, it's a multi-generational building, you know, talking to the seniors. You heard them there, actually two meetings. They were rather adamant about it. The meeting that I met with them, they talked about the same thing. They were concerned about the shelter, but they were concerned about some other things. But the, the center did come up. So, it's something that it crosses the town, I think. It cuts across all our cloth here in town where just about everybody's on, on board.
Thank you.
You know, so...
I, I for one, I, I could not be more in support of the project, and I think that what I tried to accomplish here tonight was to know that whatever way we're going to find a finance to pay for it, whatever it takes, that's what we're going to do. There's no, there's no debate about the project and the need for it. I think that we opened up our eyes tonight, and people can hear out there that it's not cheap. We're going to find a way to get it done. Do we need to vote on these issues? There's also the, the tennis court. Is that school?
The school department, yes. So, the school is, is not here. I apologize. I
It's okay.
I forgot that they had that item on there.
That's on the list.
$100,000.
And that's resurfacing their current courts at the high school site.
It says reconstruction, actually.
Yep.
Yes, they have to, the asphalt that's there now, they need to pull up and replace completely.
So, do we vote on this?
I think we can vote on that one as well. They perhaps can have those courts done by spring season.
We voted on two, three already?
We did the digital systems, right, upgrade.
We did the HVAC. We did the, the website upgrade.
Russell's Mills.
Town website.
Russell's Mills purchase.
We have the other three.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four.
I make a motion, I think the motion should name these specific projects. Mr. McDonald, you want to help us out here?
I'll make a motion to approve the ARPA funding for the high school tennis court reconstruction for $100,000. For the Dartmouth Regional Parks, tennis, basketball, tennis slash basketball slash pickleball, court renovations to the, the regional park up in the, off Old Fall River Road for $460,000. Also, the Russell's Mills Road pickleball courts for $330,000. And the recreation center design and engineering for $1.192 million.
I'd be gladly second that.
Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Passes unanimously.
Just one quick question.
Right ahead. Mr. McDonald?
Looking at what was proposed, totals $4,163,886. ARPA funding's available next year, $5,177,703. Do we have this $9.3 million available right now?
Uh, no.
Okay. Because I'm wondering if, are we limited to what was presented?
In, in what way?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to add $450,000 to the Dartmouth housing, just at least to give them half of what they want. So, at least they have an idea that, you know, the town is committed to, not totally, because it's not the 900,000 that they're asking for, but I think they can get it from other sources.
That may not, right, well, that may not help because it may not be enough.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm just thinking. They, they have to look for other sources like, you know, CPC funding, you know, for October. Because there is a housing component, you know, in CPC funds that they can tap into.
If we approach...
They could probably get the other 450,000. I'd like to give them at least a head start, and then let them go for the 450,000 at CPC funds.
Can I get you more information on that for the next meeting?
Yes, please.
And then, just to find out what, what we can do and how we can do it, but for the 450,000.
If, if we can get 450,000 from CPC, I'm willing to go 450,000 from the ARPA funded for the Housing Authority.
The next CPC application is October, so...
Yes, yeah. They need to, they need to get going. They need to do it as of yesterday.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. I, let me pull together the information for next meeting and I'll walk through the process and how we'll fund it for that.
That would include CPC and the information you pulled in.
And if you need to, and if you need to put our best guy on it, you can stick our assistant town administrator on it.
That's, that's what I was, you're way ahead of me.
That's where it's going to end up anyway, so...
I think that's a, Sean, I think that's a much, a good solution. I think it's a great idea. And it doesn't preclude us doing anything else. Maybe do the whole amount if we wanted to.
Correct.
Okay.
Because I'll be honest with you, looking at the, you know, the other requests, the high school roof, okay, I don't know if I want to do that through ARPA funding because you get reimbursed, although at such a dismal amount from the state or message, from the state, you still get money, but you don't get reimbursed all the way. You, you get it over a period of time. I think it's five years, maybe six, maybe even seven. I don't know. But still, you know, it's, I think it's like 50%.
I think as we move into looking at
Yeah.
that additional ARPA money that we have, I think we do need to look at the five-year plans from each of those departments.
Yes.
And again, remind ourselves that, that the ARPA funding was, you know, given for, you know, to look at equity. And I think we need to look at, as Mr. Viera pointed out, a long, a long lens of vision for equitable town recreation for everyone, males, females, all ages. And if we can, you know, get something together to look at the site that we're proposing and the additional acreage that it has, I think we need to have that as part of our long-range goal.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I just wanted to caution the board. 3.5 million of this money comes direct to us, and the other 5.7 goes through the county. All the county monies, we need to get their permission to use the money. So, just because you voted it tonight does not mean it is approved. It has to be applied through the county. And secondly, that money is restricted in how you can use it. So, for instance, I do not think you can use the 5.7. You'd have to ask the county for the school roof. I do not think that is a allowable expense, nor do I think the recreational center is an allowable expense under the, the county money. So, just be aware, there, the county money comes with a lot more restrictions than the money that the town gets directly.
How, how much of a handle or how, how available is the county to tell us how the rules are? Is it pretty well-stated, or is there a lot of ambiguity still?
There is certainly a lot of ambiguity in the federal law, but what you do is when you apply, they have a accounting firm called CLA that will review each item and look at whether or not that item meets the criteria of, of usage. And if they then rule on it, it then goes to the county commissioners for a vote. But just be aware, there are restrictions on that money. I think all the uses that were mentioned, you can see county versus town are acceptable. And I also think the affordable housing is acceptable as well. But I do question the school roof, and I do question the recreational center in terms of using the county monies. There are no such restrictions on the town monies.
Well, we, at a million one, we have to make sure that we go to the right source for that. So, we need to clarify that.
Yes.
So, maybe I have to flip-flop some.
The county government should disappear.
Mr. Brooks, question?
You want me to come in?
I know you're usually a silent man, but I...
Hey, man, you want me to get a stool?
Please state your name and position, please.
Bruce Brooks, considered the chairman of the capital improvement committee.
Okay. We, we have a long list here, and we've had a number of discussions over the last few weeks and meetings about, with, with all this ARPA funding and all spend this money left and right, where does it leave us with some of these future capital expenditures that are so important?
Well, we, you know, we went over a lot of these, or we went over all of them, actually. And by utilizing a lot of that ARPA money, especially for the sewer and stuff like that, those are a lot of areas that we could never really get at. We've been, and I tease Tim all the time, we've been jipping the park department for years. He had come in, he'd say, you know, I'd really like to do this. And I don't know, there's, I remember the, the landing, the, down at the Horse Neck Road, 10 years before we actually finally got to it. So, when you can take the ARPA money and put it towards things like this, it's a blessing for us because then it helps us in the other areas. So, yes.
And these votes we took tonight
Yes.
on all those projects?
Yep. Yep. We, we did discuss them. We didn't, we didn't actually vote because it wasn't really ours, but we did discuss it, and we did go over this list.
I think Mr. McDonald makes a good point about the high school roof as well, and that's a, yeah. Especially with this funding available, others, okay. But otherwise, you, you feel...
We've vetted it, yeah. They're, they're all very helpful to us in the future for the, you know, we'll be meeting. They're, they're all very helpful to us in the future for the, you know, we'll be meeting in a couple of weeks to start on our next, for.
It's an ominous list there, the future expenditures, when you consider that paying for the, um, the rec center is, sure there is.
There's a lot more.
Yeah, there's so much on here.
This is the tip of the iceberg.
Sure.
This is just, this is just the highlights.
Okay, so, the, the ARPA portion, I thought it sounds like everybody here were on the same page.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
There were doubts about your performance tonight, but Mrs. Brooks said, Mrs. Brooks said you do okay. Anything else on the ARPA funding, anybody?
That's it.
Okay, I've had enough of it, yep. Oh, this is good. Town council fee increase, Mr. McGinnis.
Uh, yes, so our town council attorney, Anthony Savistano, has asked for a increase to his hourly rate. It, uh, it has not increased since 2005, so in 17 years, he's finally come forward and asked for a $50 increase to his rate, $275 per hour.
What's the rush?
Motion to approve.
I will gladly second that.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Passes. Uh, steel workers, memorandum of understanding, ratification.
Uh, yes, so we have a memorandum of agreement with the Steel Workers Collective Bargaining Unit, which is the managers and department heads. The MOA is in your packet. There's not a lot of changes to the overall contract. There's a COLA increase is in some wording in regard to health insurance, and a minor increase to longevity.
Comments, or questions from anybody?
Motion to approve. Second.
No comments, all in favor? We say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next would be DPW, Department of Public Works meeting update.
Uh, yes, so, um, we, uh, we've had some discussions with the Department of Public Works on a variety of things. They were here at the last meeting to talk about the water rates and the reasons for the increase to the water and sewer rates. Subsequent to that, we had a meeting with myself, Mr. Talabom, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Almy, and Mr. Barber, just to talk about the water rate, more about what we can do as a group to be more communicative and transparent. I think we're all, uh, we're all on the same page, wanting to provide the best service to the community. It was getting together to talk about the best way to do that, the best way to keep people informed. It was a very productive and positive meeting, and, uh, Mr. Talabom, you wanted to have us here and the representatives just to, to, to talk about that. You know, everybody is on the same page and moving forward, and is, is, is doing the best for the community possible.
And I, there's no other department in town that touches every resident's life every day, and there's such concern about water and sewer and safety, and, uh, it's a giant department, it's the third largest budget in town. And, um, there's an, in, in today's world of COVID or, uh, or, uh, 3.5% employment rate that everybody's looking for good quality people. And, uh, I, we've been working closely and talking on a regular basis now, and we have a fantastic group of people, we just need to have more, because there's a, we have holes to fill, and these are, these are not specialized, these are very specialized jobs that, in the old days, I think we, you could, you could drive the dump truck for a while, and then go to the office and make a few decisions, but those days are long gone. And, um, I, I, I just want to say, straight out from my point of view, and along with Mr. McDonald, that we had a really thorough discussion regarding how we can help. Uh, we don't want to do, we don't want to make your decisions, we don't want to be part of your everyday process, but when it comes to putting the town's resources behind to help you find the sophisticated employees you need, and whether it be engineers or whatever we want to help, we have a, a new and very well-qualified HR department now, manager, and we're gonna put those sources, resources behind. These are positions that are accounted for, they're budgeted, but need to be filled. And we're very concerned about helping out with secession, so you have people, uh, people in place so that we can make sure that things are running smooth. My hat's off to Tim, I think he was thrown into a situation where he wasn't really trained to do the job that he's been thrown at, and I think he's been, uh, he's putting his heart and soul into it, and we need to, as a town, as a group, support him. He's got a great board of direct, board with Rob Almy in charge, and I think that, uh, there was a heated discussion a couple of weeks back here, and I think that what it did was force us to say, we, we gotta talk, and we gotta do things better and help out. And I'm, uh, I think we, we owe it to ourselves as a, as a town to do the things that we want, we talked about to get done, and to, there's a lot of work to be done, and a lot of projects, and, uh, I appreciate what we've done so far, and, uh, that's kind of why. Mr. McDonald?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, go figure, I was the one that blew up. But, I mean, I understand the reasoning behind it, and after discussions, but I think what really kind of came out of that meeting is that we're gonna be working closely with the DPW, we're gonna have the workshops prior to any type of, um, you know, review of, of the rate increases and whatnot. And one of the things that, um, we agreed upon is that, you know, even though the increases are going to be, that we're going to be reviewing them in, in six months. The other thing that struck me was, the one thing that wasn't really said, and is the direction the DPW is going to, and, and from this point on. When you have a meeting with two people from this board, the town administrator, the chairman of the DPW, and the director of the DPW, the interim, I guess, at this still, at this point, why it's, that needs to change. When that, when that person, the interim director, comes in from vacation to sit on in the meeting, and not say, well, can we have the meeting next week, because I'm on vacation? When he comes in on vacation to sit down to meet with us, have the discussion that we have, to me, tells me where the DPW is going. And we need to make sure that the person that is the interim, to remove that name from that, I think we have the right person for the right job at the right time, to where we need to bring the DPW kind of into the light a little bit. Not saying that they're, they're not, but at least that the people feel comfortable with what's going on, the leadership that this board needs to provide, and the leadership coming from the DPW as to the delivery of services, whether it's water, sewer, trash, and whatnot. You're gonna get complaints about every department in town, more so the DPW, because it does affect a lot of people. You know, and it affects them in probably the worst possible way, is trash, you know, my, my street wasn't picked up, my trash can got annihilated by the recycling truck today. Um, you know, my mailbox got, you know, waylaid by flinging snow from the plow, because the, you know, because basic physics of wet snow coming off a plow, it just doesn't seem to understand, you know, a wooden mailbox. You know, you're gonna get that, and, and I think people need to feel comfortable about where we are going to go as a town, and what the department is going to do. And I, and I really seriously think that's what's gonna happen here. So, I'm very pleased at, uh, at the meeting, I'm pleased at the outcome, and I, and I'm looking forward to seeing a better, um, understanding between the two boards and, and discussions as, as we move forward.
Any comments?
Mr. Barber could correct me, but I believe he's still on vacation, is that right? Okay.
Gosh.
And he didn't ask the select board to reschedule their meeting, which is another good sign. Uh, I'm Rob Almy, I'm the chair of the Public Works Board. Um, I, I, we had a great discussion, we talked about water and sewer rates, and how to make that process more public. In all my years of working with and for public agencies, it's sort of one of those things that it's hard to get the public involved in. But we'll work on it, and I think workshops were one of the things we specifically talked about. The board did have a conversation at its last meeting, we are interested in a better relationship or a more vigorous relationship with your board and with the public, and we'll figure out how to do that. The issue of capital projects, in particular, the ARPA projects, is one that's essential for the town. My attitude is, when the state or federal agencies say, yeah, what we're gonna do is allocate money, and you can apply for it, what you're actually doing is you're being asked to apply to bring your tax dollars back into your town, okay? So, as far as I'm concerned, a winning proposal is to bring as much money back, whatever the projects are. And Public Works has got some, there's a bunch of other ones, whatever we can do to help. Grant, grant proposals, I've got a little bit of experience with that, and so, we'll work and stay on top of that. And, um, there's another pot of money coming in from the feds, maybe, we'll see. That's supposed to be mostly about energy efficiency, maybe there's some other projects we can get locked in there as well, we should look at that, see what else we can do. But the capital projects, we will stay on top of as a board, we'll work extensively and make sure that we keep all of those on, on track. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, or, um, I don't want to waste your time, so.
You good?
I'm good.
Yeah, wonderful. Thanks for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, board and committee appointments.
Just one.
Just one? The cultural council, is that the one? Yeah. Lorraine Granda, the cultural council.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Lorraine Granda, you are reappointed the cultural council.
Yep, along with Boy George.
Thank you very much for your service. Okay.
Enjoy the rest of your vacation.
We will not.
Barbara, Mr. Barber, before you leave? I better not see you at another meeting this week.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
You too.
Okay, uh, we are going down to old business?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes, not much to report. COVID, no new updates, plus corner, Lake Nook joke, and the municipal broadband, no new updates on any of those items.
Okay. Minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Before minutes.
Yes.
So, it is old business, because I think Mr. McDonald, a few years ago, had the same issues, so Eversource and their arborists. I've had a lot of people talk to me about what's going on in, in our town with, with trees growing across the roads, being unsafe, for no other reason that they might be on a cyclical road or something like that, I don't think it really, it's, it's an unsafe situation. We need to, uh, we need to get the, both parties, the Eversource, who represent the arborists, vice versa. But interesting, as I was thinking about what I wanted to talk about, and the danger of these trees in this old, very old town, don't forget, most of these, most of these roads were, were dirt roads with horse-drawn carriages. Driving, um, north on Tucker Road, and I get by the school, and, and I see a police cruiser pulled over, the lights on, get around the bend, as, you know, I think we all know, get around bends, straighten out to go towards Route 6, and there's this gigantic limb dead. It has to, had to be six or seven feet wide, long, and at least four or five feet wide. Now, that, oh, I think we all knew, yesterday afternoon at that time, we had some tremendous winds. So, can you imagine someone driving with their family, and that ended up in the top of their car? We, we truly need to get, get Eversource in, we need to get the arborist in. I can bring, at that meeting, I'll bring a ton of pictures of examples of dangerous, dangerous, dangerous trees that represent, you know, someone's life at some point.
Well, what are we asking for? As opposed to having a meeting, do we, can we ask them to come prepared?
Yeah.
What are we asking for?
They have plans of what they're gonna do, where they're gonna cut, uh, trees, is that correct, Sean?
Correct.
They can name them, but there's more to this than just, uh, cutting a few limbs here and there to protect their wires. So, um, they, they must, I'd just like to see where they want to go.
So, do you think that they have a list of the more vulnerable trees, that sooner or later they're gonna trim down?
Uh, I think they have a, a tree maintenance program. Um, I know, I know they have a tree maintenance program, I'm, I'm not sure of all the details or how they determine which trees and which areas and when to do it, so, but I know it's available, and I'll contact Eversource to see.
Have someone come in, maybe?
I'll, I'll ask them to come in, if not, at a minimum, I'll have them provide their policy.
And that being said, the town has a responsibility, um, as far as the up, the maintenance of some trees in town, that are not part of the Eversource arborist cleanup, that, that represent danger to, to our residents. And, and we need to, we need to pay attention, we have never, never paid attention to.
Is that a DPW issue?
Could be, I guess.
Tree warden issue.
Tree warden, whatever, but, um, there are numerous, and I, I suggest to all the people, the 10,000 people that are watching tonight, when you drive to the beach tomorrow, just take your, your eyes off the road, just for a second, and take a look up, and see how many trees you see that are growing, that are not growing, that are rotted, and that are just standing up on the side of the road, there's one on Dartmouth Street, dead as a doornail, it's been there 10 years, needs to go. Danger to our, to our, to our residents.
So, what is the solution here? Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, um, regarding Eversource, Eversource's plans for tree trimming basically is wherever there's an Eversource wire, wherever there's a wire owned by Eversource, there's a tree trimming, where it goes. And this is, this is the situation that you have. You have their arborists going around, doing what they need to do, clear a certain, you need a certain amount of clearance away from the wires during the course of whatever. Sometimes that creates, um, an outcry from the community, because some trees are totally butchered, or what we feel is totally butchered, but when in fact, it's the arborist is saying, this is the best way to trim this tree, so that it protects the lines and to protect the health of the tree. Sometimes you have trees that basically look like donuts, with the wires going through them, there's several like that. And, but, we also have scenic roads in this town, that tree trimming has to be a, a long process to go through, to go through approval, it has to go to the planning board for approval. Anytime, anything that has to be done on a scenic road. The biggest problem road that we have with trees is Tucker Road. Tucker Road is a scenic road.
And Horse Neck Road.
And Horse Neck. I remember, I don't know how many years ago, Horse Neck Road was, was done, and it was just basically, I mean, it was, it was a complete disaster. It looked like crap.
Like a ruffle cut.
Yeah, and it just, um, you know, and, but, they were well within their rights to do what they needed to do, to, to do. And are there trees on, that are in the town easement that need to be looked at? Yes, there are. The problem is staffing. We don't have the staff to go do that. And then, I mean, this town could keep two guys in the tree truck and the chipper busy every single day of the week, for the entire year plus. And then where they start in the beginning, they can go back and start again. So, I mean, I, I don't think we need to have Eversource come before this board, but I think what we need to do is have the tree warden sit down with Eversource, and at least talk to the town planner about a better way of handling trees on a scenic road. talk to the town planner about a better way of handling trees on a scenic road. And somehow to make the process easier, to where it's safer for the residents in that neighborhood who live there, who depend upon the electricity, but also for the people traveling the roads. And I think that's a possibility, to, you know, for them to do that.
So if a resident looks out of their window, and sees that they have a tree that they're concerned about, and it's near a line, because that's where we're, what we're talking about, who do they call?
Eversource.
They call Eversource. So when would someone call the town's tree warden?
When there's no power line.
When there's no power line. And the tree warden is?
DPW director.
The director of DPW, okay, just wanted to get that.
I mean-
So no wire, call DPW.
Yeah, in this town-
Wire, call Eversource.
In this town, the tree warden is the DPW director. In some other towns, especially the one across the water, the tree warden is actually elected.
Gets a stipend too.
Of course.
Across the river. Our rivals.
The Blue Devils.
The tree warden is elected, and he happens to be a former classmate of mine.
It sounds like a big time job to me.
Yeah.
Is that full-time, 24/7?
We have a full-time job talking about what I want to do, just that alone.
Well, every single-
We have the, the DPW has the equipment. They have the equipment, it's a nice big white truck, it says, DRTDPW.
The other one is deciding-
Like you said, it's personnel.
It's just the personnel.
Personnel.
The other is deciding which tree should be trimmed, which one shouldn't, that's a subject interpretation.
Right, and then, and then you run into another series of problems with trees, that's, it has to do with the sidewalks, which the DPW is working on the sidewalk.
That's another issue.
That's another issue.
We went through this with Dave Hickox. And there were two choices, one were to remove the trees that were ruining the sidewalks, and most of them were maple trees, and still are, and you know the root system of a maple tree, it's not, it's not low, it grows along, along the road, and there's a few projects in the town of Dartmouth, where the residents cannot walk in any of this, on any of the sidewalks, they have to walk in the street, it's that bad. So, that being said, the least expensive way to handle something like that was not to take the trees out, but was to take the sidewalks out and plant grass instead of sidewalks. So what does that do? I think it chases the people back on the street.
Back on the street?
Well, I, this reminds me of our discussion a few weeks back regarding fishing on the bridge, we did come up with something to try to do, we just talked about anything, hiring a full-time tree warden to, to getting Eversource to cut, trim all the trees. So what are we looking for to do as a first step, be specific? Any suggestions?
I think Eversource needs to do a better job cutting, the arborist needs to do a much better job describing, describing to the Eversource people what trees to cut, and how to cut them.
Well, maybe Eversource needs to produce their list, which you said they have a list.
Eversource has their plan, they have their own arborist that they use-
Their tree maintenance program.
Correct. So I think we should start by getting a copy of that and seeing if we maybe get a representative in, I'm not sure if they'll be available, but we can definitely get a copy of the program to review.
I mean, no disrespect, but one man's cut on one tree does not necessarily mean it jives with somebody else's.
Right, no, I understand this.
No, but if we have the list, and we can review it with the tree warden, if the tree warden has heard of other trees that need to be cut, then we can-
You just have to remember that they have to have a clearance away from the wires.
Yeah.
And that's, that's really their main focus. And how it affects the shape of the tree, it's really not much of a concern for that.
It's not their problem.
Well, I would like to hear from someone sitting out here eventually from Eversource, here's what we're doing, here's how we find out which trees should be trimmed and which ones aren't. I think maybe, we haven't talked to them much, maybe just by talking to them, they'll, maybe they'll pay more attention. Let's start with that. One thing I meant to ask the DPW fellows about the status of the, I got a couple of requests, of the hose hookup on the fishing pier. Could you, could you ask Mr. Barber about that?
I will.
Thank you.
I do know that the, the bridge itself has had to-
Oh, yeah.
-be hosed down a few times in this heat.
In what ways and where?
So, and that's done with fresh, freshwater, not the saltwater, so it may be something, right, so it may be something that we're talking about on the fishing side, that we would need freshwater to be-
I was, twice in the last couple of weeks, I was in, I saw for my own eyes that the arm did not go up, and the poor fellow had to be directing traffic as people had to go around. We are destined for a disaster on that bridge. And I don't know what we do about it, but it's not good. Talk about Aqua funds, I guess, if the state gets involved, you know the bridge is going to start over a little street.
If you remember when we reconstructed the Causeway, the uproar, that they had to go all the way around to get to Paydene.
Well, it, the bridge is-
That could happen very, very quickly.
That bridge is a giant issue right now.
I'm assuming we're on the information portion?
Not yet.
Having skipped minutes.
We haven't done the minutes yet.
We'll do the minutes, then with the information.
Okay.
We were, we were, we were kind of leafed away from that.
Mr. Mickelson had made a point about the lengthy discussion regarding, I hope once again, we have discussion on the budget for next year, it's as lengthy as the-
You never know.
As you say, okay.
Well, maybe he'll just leave it alone.
Yeah.
Leaf it alone.
Minutes.
Prove them-
Stuff grab.
Sitting next to Methuselah. Okay, I reviewed the minute, I, from what I can see, there was no issues, so I'm going to make a motion, we approve the minutes of June 27th, July 11th, and July 25th.
I will second that.
Any discussion or comments?
No.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none, passes unanimously, thank you. Information, Ms. Brooks?
All right. I apologize to the Audubon Society that at our last meeting, I did not let everyone know that I had represented the group at the grand opening and ribbon cutting to the new all-persons trail that they've created. And when I say all persons, it is an area that they've created that is, you know, accessible to everyone, like handicap accessible, stroller, they've done a great job incorporating braille signs, so, you know, really, it's an area for everyone. And we're very fortunate in Dartmouth, because we have the beautiful trails of DNRT, but anyone that also wants to take a look at the Allen's Pond Wildlife Sanctuary, they've done a great job, and they have multiple trails, you know, ranging from, you know, one, a quarter of a mile walk, to, I think the longest one was seven miles, so it's really beautiful. That's one. The second thing that I wanted to bring everyone's attention to is that the Dartmouth Schools, the school department is offering another, in the mental health series, Your Child's Anxiety, and this is going to be held August 23rd, 6:00 PM via Zoom. All parents with someone in this, you know, a child that attends a school, receive this in the weekly backpack, the notice about it, but anyone at home that would like to listen in or participate, should go to the website and look under the, to the Dartmouth High School's website, under the Flyers tab, and you will see that it is there. And again, this is going to be a course created by Jenna Reizema, and she will be, it's learning simple strategies that will help parents respond to their child's anxiety. When applied, these skills will help the child and parent bond, allowing for the child to identify and work through their anxiety more effectively. This is August 23rd, 6:00 PM via Zoom, you do need to register in advance, it's a perfect time, because the closer and closer we get to that first day of school, everybody's anxiety starts going up, so.
Well, in the school department, as well as our town, Youth Advocate has really made it a point to know how critical this is as an issue, and they're doing the best they can to keep offering programs. Thanks for mentioning.
And as of right now, it looks like the school department, the schools will be back in session, just as they always had been pre-COVID for the first time, so, very exciting.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
You're welcome.
Next, Mr. Mickelson?
No, it's for you to note.
Me?
Yeah. It's your, it's your chair, you announce.
Okay, you don't want to do it?
You get paid the big bucks.
Okay. St. Peter's Episcopal Church and the Dartmouth Youth Commission are cosponsoring a school supply drive for the children of Dartmouth. What we need pencils, sharpeners, colored markers, rulers, crayons, pens, you name it. Bring your donations to the church at St. Peter's in the Paydene Village during the month of August, bins are set up inside the main entrance of church, or you can drop off your donations at Dartmouth Town Hall, second floor across from the building department, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. Donations will be accepted until August 28th. If you'd rather write a check to contribute toward the school supply drive, we'd also be grateful, you may mail your contribution to St. Peter's Episcopal Church, Attention School Supply Drive, 351 Elm Street, Dartmouth, Mass. And thank you for your donation, and thank you, St. Peter's, and our Dartmouth Youth Commission for a fantastic program. Any questions, I'm sure it's on our town website and under the Youth Commission's banner.
Good job.
I thought it was very good, yeah, thank you.
It's a red-eyed bird I've heard in such a long time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, this meeting is officially adjourned.